Welcome to City Council. Our special meeting agenda has been posted, as I recall.
That's correct. It was posted in accordance with Nevada Open Meeting Law, and all members are present.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Any public comment here or on the phone, 702-589-9629? You can call in now, waiting for anybody who's here who wants to get up and give a public comment. If nobody is here wanting to give public comment, we will open the phone lines or any written mail-in or otherwise, Madam City Clerk.
No comments were received.
Thank you. And we'll wait a few moments for any phone lines that could be open. Hearing none, we will open the special agenda for possible resolution number 7597 regarding City Council Nevada approving the salary adjustment of Municipal Court Judge Victor Miller.
Mr. Bolt. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm Bryce Bolt, Administrative Services Director. Item one for possible action is regarding salary adjustment for Municipal Court Judge Victor Miller. Although Victor Miller has received cost of living increases, he's not received a base salary increase since 2014. And Judge Miller is here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. I'm sure there will be a question. Thank you, Mr. Bolt. Judge Miller?
Thank you, Mayor Hardy, Mayor Tim Jorgensen, Councilman Walton, Councilman Fox, and Councilwoman Booth. Thank you for indulging me, for being, or to be here and make a request of you. Before I do, let me tell you a brief story, if I may get your indulgence. When I became judge, municipal judge, a few years ago, Mayor Ferraro was mayor, and he told me, he said, "Judge, in order to be a municipality, we have to have a municipal court. In order to be a human being, we need to have a stomach. We don't want to hear from either of them." So, and here I am, and you're hearing from me, so I appreciate the indulgence here. The, so I was here a couple of weeks ago for the budget meeting. I mentioned that I was, it'd been a while since I'd had my base salary adjusted, and it turns out since 2014. Also, I was on the agenda for next week to give a presentation, so I'm going to ask for a little more indulgence if I can just to talk a little bit about the court, and then you won't have to hear from the court next week. And, but I won't take too much time other than to mention, the court, we're in a separate building, and the court is also a separate branch of government, just like the United States of America, where there are three branches of government. In the municipality in Nevada, we have a similar separation of powers. We have the legislative branch, which you represent, you make the laws and ordinances and policy for the state as legis, or the city as legislative branch.
Judge, will you excuse me for a second, please? I'm gonna ask the mayor for a point of order right now. So, the agenda item is for possible action, a resolution regarding the salary adjustment, not to receive any presentation from the municipal court. So, I'm just asking if that point of order is appropriate for this meeting.
If I may, this ties--
Just a moment, just a moment.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Judge Miller can absolutely give background about the municipal court as it pertains to evaluating whether a salary adjustment is warranted, or what that amount would be. But as far as going into an annual report, I believe that's on the next meeting's agenda.
I didn't want to be rude and interrupt you, if that was the intent. But when you mentioned that we wouldn't hear from you next week, then that kind of changed the concept. So, thank you for your indulgence. Carry on.
And so, you won't hear from me next week, but this is preparatory to my ultimate request. So, it's just kind of a background of that. So, and which then goes to the point, executive, legislative, judicial, separate branch. And that's why, although you will be having an evaluation of the other appointed's because of the separation of powers, there won't be an evaluation today. Although, I am willing and able to answer questions and perhaps do a self-evaluation of any issues that you have questions about. So, the court, in a separate building, separate branch, but has nine employees that, in addition to the judicial duties I have, I'm administrator over there and take care of the administrative things that go along with having a building and nine employees. That's not the most fun part of being a judge. I love being a judge. I love the things that go along with that. But then, the, you know, the administrative, you have to make your branch of government work, and that's what we do. So, I've been the municipal judge since December of 1984. Before that, I was the Associate Municipal Judge since February of 1984. And when I began here, we were down in the lower part of the building, where my third grade classroom was, which is where the finance department is now. And then, and we were able to take care of things in Little Boulder City with our population of just under 10,000, then, one day a week. And then, in 1984, or excuse me, 1994, I became Justice of the Peace as well. Appointed by the County Commission to that position, actually in '93, ran for election in '94, and have been Justice of the Peace since that time. When I say I became Municipal Judge in 1984, I was appointed by the City Council at that time. The, since then, the position has changed. We don't, we're not able to take care of all we need to do in one day a week any longer. In 90, you know, around 2014, when my last pay adjustment was, the position had become so, between the two, the Justice Court and the Municipal Court, that it was impossible to have that be part-time any longer. And so, through a joint agreement with the county and the city, and I became basically full-time, but in two half-time positions. The way that it works between the two is that the statutes in Nevada, Chapter Five, is the statute that governs Municipal Court, says that there are municipal judges are elected, except in the case where there's a municipality with an elected Justice of the Peace, the city may appoint the municipal judge as the, or appoint the elected Justice of the Peace as the municipal judge also. And so, that's the situation that we're working on since, well, actually, since '94. It became more formal in 2014. Also, in 2014, because of the separation of powers, there was a Supreme, Nevada Supreme Court case called Sparks versus Sparks, Sparks Municipal Court versus the City of Sparks, which outlined and talked about, formalized the separation of powers between the two branches of government. And because of the Sparks decision, we entered into, by we, I mean the city and the Municipal Court entered into an MOU, and we functioned under an MOU since that time. An agreement where the city provides services, some services to help us, such as human relations services, payroll services, IT services. And then, also, there's an MOU between the city and the county relative to the judge, the Justice of the Peace sitting as municipal judge, which, now that I think about it, needs to be looked at again because there was a, something that needed to be looked, you know, on its face, it says we'll look at it again before the end of the next term, so sometime in 2024. At any rate, so, we function between the two half-time each, each, but often, there's an awful lot of overlap between the courts as far as, if I can, and if I may, because I had an inquiry over the weekend from Mayor Hardy, and I briefly set forth some things there for him in response to his inquiry. And I'll just, if I may, read this, and I think it might be more understandable. Talking about the two positions are each half-time, however, in reality, most of the time is spent in the municipal, on the municipal side. On the municipal side, we have seven scheduled court sessions in a week. On the county side, there's only one scheduled court session a week. With a monthly juvenile session, and every other, and every eight weeks, I will sit in, sit for an additional daily pre-trial release hearings. And I'm on that week, this week, I'm doing release hearings every day for the Justice Court. Monthly, there is a juvenile court. The municipal judge has additional administrative duties, where I need to be at at least weekly city staff meetings to coordinate efforts, plan budgets, HR issues, CIP issues, IT matters, and financial policies. Monthly, I chair a meeting of the Boulder City's Justice Partners to coordinate our various missions in the, in the Justice Partners in the city. In the Justice Court, I am a voting member of the Clark County Justice Partners, and that meets regularly at the Metropolitan Police Department Headquarters. During this legislation period, I represent both courts on three judicial legislative committees that meet weekly and coordinate with the city attorney and city manager relative to pending matters, legislative matters. Additionally, in both positions, I am available 24/7 for search warrants and constitutionally mandated probable cause reviews, and average three to five after-hour meetings weekly for the purpose primarily of bench warrants, often at 2:00 AM. The primary reason that I'm asking for salary adjustment is in the new hearings that are required by the last legislature that went into effect July, last July 1st. These additional hearings are required for anyone who's arrested to be seen before a judge in an adversarial hearing with a prosecutor and a defense attorney within 48 hours of the arrest. These new hearings are being held on Mondays, even if it's a holiday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday. This commitment for the probable cause hearings and for the 48-hour hearings were not present within my duties at the time of my last salary adjustment in 2014. So, really, that's the focus. I've been able to receive cost of living adjustments from the city, and so, really, what I'm asking the council for is to give me the, a salary adjustment to accommodate these additional duties. The, so, there's a lot more in my mind I thought I could talk about, but I think I got to the point where I wanted to be here. I could talk more about the things that, other things we do over at the court. I didn't even mention the drug court, and it was something that I love. But ultimately, I was elected to the, as President of the Nevada Judges of Limited Jurisdiction, my association, and I served that, in that position this year. And when I did receive that honor, I told them, and I'll tell you, that this is really my life's work. This is, being judge is in what I call the people's court. We have many courts in Nevada, but the limited jurisdictions, these are where most people come into contact with courts. And I've worked hard to make sure that I represent my community well, represent the judiciary well, and do my best to serve the people of Boulder City. So, with that, I'm willing to take questions.
Any questions?
This may be either directed for you, Judge, or maybe Mr. Bolt. I'm not sure who is appropriate for the answers. To help me understand a little bit more, who covers the Justice of the Peace salary?
That's the county does.
The county covers that, okay.
And that, by statute, is adjusted in December every other year.
Thank you. So, in essence, I don't know if there was a range, or there exists a range for the Municipal Court Judge, but was it concluded then that in 2014, that you had reached what was then the, what we'll, you know, in air quotes, say the top of the range? And therefore, there has not been any adjustment in the base salary because you kind of reached that, and then everything was just cola from there on out?
Yes.
Is that what we're saying?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. And then, while I appreciate the fact that oftentimes, it's 2:00 AM, odds are, right? But I think really what we're considering then is the fact that there's additional hours required.
That's right. The other things were built into that, and I took this job. Like anybody who works on-call 24/7, you know, that's, that's your job, and that's what was built in to, when I accepted the position and the salary. So, now, it's these additional hearings, basically, that, that the legislature and actually, the United States Supreme Court-- that, that the legislature and actually, United States Supreme Court and the Nevada Supreme Court have added on top of what we were doing before. It's not to get too editorial, but it'd be, to me, it's kind of like if you had, if a citizen said, "We have to have a hitter, a meeting, a city council meeting on this, and you've got to do it in 48 hours because the First Amendment of the Constitution of the United States says, 'I have a right of redress of grievances,'" then that would, that's kind of what was been imposed upon us, is we've got constitutional rights, but we've got to do it within 48 hours, so.
And one final question, and I'm not sure who this is really supposed to be directed to. Because we're in a very unique situation with the justice of the peace, and the state law allows that the city may appoint that individual as the municipal court judge, right? So we're combined. At some, one day, right, in the future, you're going to say, "I'm done," right? And then, we may not have the, the two positions filled by one individual. So I, I have a question. What are the implications when, if those ever separate? Is this number that we're talking about today tied specifically to Judge Victor Miller in the unique position because you're both, wearing both hats? Or would this start over again when we have potentially two separate individuals in that?
And that may be some legal questions or HR. In my opinion, it's, it's a Victor Miller salary. It's when you would negotiate with a new individual, you would be negotiating with a new individual. That it would be, you know, and I would anticipate someone coming in that doesn't have 35 years of experience would be receiving less.
Yeah, yeah, no, my, my point was because they're connected, is there any, is there any connection for, for what the salary was? Because you were wearing both hats, was it higher or lower because of that? Or is it just straight what it is, looked at its own individual salary? That's why I asked if there were any implications if they ever separate.
Right.
Counsel member, I can answer that question. So currently, the municipal judge's salary is listed as one figure on our classification and compensation schedule, which is approved by council every budget process. You'll be seeing that in May when you approve the final budget. So because that is just one set figure, it does not have a range. And at the point of appointing a new person to that position, the council would be able to set the salary for that position if you wanted to do a range, or if you wanted just to set them out.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that's all I've got.
Any other questions?
So we would not have to set that range prior to the decision that we're making? The resolution before you today is just to set the salary for the current municipal judge. Okay, thank you.
So I, I just see one glaring omission.
Yeah, thank you, Mary. And I think I can anticipate your question here.
Having you anticipate it, let's see how good your mind reading is.
Okay, so, well, it's, it's no magic on my part because you'd asked me before. It's like, well, what are you looking for, Judge? And so I think I mentioned earlier, at the last time, some increases that had happened with the other appointed's, but this, now there's, we're, we're, you're distant from that. But I, I look at, you know, I get the continuing cost of living, but this additional work, I think, is probably about 6% is what I'm thinking. So I'm looking for like a 6% bump in what my base is. So let me, also, while I'm speaking, I, I need to make a disclosure that I'm appearing in my personal capacity, not as a judge, because of the pecuniary interest of asking for an increase. So I, so that's just a disclosure that the ethics people like me to make. I think the, my other request, though, and I voiced it last time, is this went into effect past January. I would really love if, if this would, would go back, would increase, whatever increase, if you feel that there's reason for an increase, and you grant me an increase, that it would be retroactive to July 1st. We, we got money to deal with the unfunded mandates from ARPA. This is one of the unfunded mandates. There is money, we got, we hired new attorneys, we hired new staff. We're working on case management systems that costs. But one thing that didn't get in that was the, was the judge. And so I've been doing it since past July, actually, months before getting ready. We started actually early in, in May, but, but the last, and so there's still money in the current budget to make that, that happen, so.
So if, if I can make your editorial comment that you don't want to make, the legislature gave us an unfunded mandate. And the unfunded mandate started back in July. And the unfunded mandate has been covered by ARPA funds. And we still have those ARPA funds available.
Yes.
And so if there was a change in the base salary to whatever amount, retroactive to July 1st, it would be covered by ARPA funds.
And I don't know if Angela, so finance isn't here. So that could be, but looking at my budget, yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the judge, councilman?
I'm not the judge, I'm sorry. What I wanted to know, I thought we could go up to 8%. Is anybody interested in, in that? I just feel like adding three more days to somebody's life is worth a little more than 6%.
Just so councils are aware, there's not a similar contract in place with the judge and the city, so there is not a limitation on the percentage.
Okay, so we could offer 8% then?
You could offer whatever percentage the council wishes.
I just think that adding three more days to somebody's life is worth a little bit more, is, in my opinion. And I do know how much the courts do, because doing property management, I know they're, they're all the time, and they're such a big help. So I just think that maybe a little more than 6% would be worth, worth it for the judge.
I, I will say, ARPA funds don't go on forever, is that correct? So that, that is one of the equations. And the judge did admit that he was asking for 6%. And I'm just kind of curious, the mood of the council. Let me put it this way, the mood of the council, I think, would be to do something that would be appropriate for the time spent and the extra time spent. So I think we, I would accept a motion to have a percentage increase made.
You just need for the motion for the increase?
Correct.
There, there is a resolution here. It, it contemplates a dollar amount, but you could say, we could have, it, it could be a percentage.
So that would be Resolution 7597.
That's correct.
To give, now therefore be resolved, city council approves a salary adjustment from 109,262.4 to XXXXX. But we have to fill in the XXXX by percentage or by amount?
You can fill it by either.
I would be comfortable going up to the 8%.
Is that a motion?
Resolution.
Just so the council is aware, this, this increase, as the resolution is written, would be effective today, moving forward. It would not be retroactive.
Okay.
I see that Angela came in. Would she be willing to come up and share with us just where the monies for this would come from? If it does come out of ARPA initially, what the ongoing cost of this would indicate for where that would come from?
For the record, we don't have a motion on the floor yet.
So are you talking about for fiscal year '23? Yes, so there was ARPA money put into the general fund to assist with the unfunded mandates in court, so.
Okay, then, ongoing from then, because this won't be at one time?
ARPA money would be spent this year, so it wouldn't be ongoing. It would just come from the general fund, the ongoing raise, if that helps.
So the ARPA money would be, if I may, it would be from July 1st until when?
Just fiscal year '23, fiscal year, because it was, I believe, $180,000 that was put into the court to assist with unfunded mandates. So it'd just be part of that money that was put in there.
So it would go from July 1st till June 30th of this year?
Yep.
And then, after that point, we're under general fund? If I understood that right?
Yes.
I'm waiting for a motion now.
I'll make a motion on Resolution 7597 to give the Judge Miller an 8% pay adjustment.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
And discussion? Councilman Wolfen.
If you're following your first and second rules of politics, I appreciate the judge's background and the information, thank you. And I appreciate his forthrightness in what he's seeking. I don't see why we should go beyond what he's seeking, regardless of his value. I, I mean, you, you can't really put a dollar on Judge Miller's experience and his value to the community. But when we talk dollars and cents, I think 6% varies. Acquiesce to that number, given it a reasonable amount of thought. So that's my two cents.
Thank you. Other questions, discussion? So I'll, I'll weigh in on this. I like it when somebody's very frank with me and asks for something, and it's very justifiable to do. And so I would be on the 6% retroactive to July 1st of last year. That's where I would be. And is there, is there any other discussion?
So I, in looking at this, if I look at the 6%, I look at this as what you're asking at this time for the responsibilities that you have, ongoing and upcoming. We, we can never predict, and we don't understand what could be coming in the future. And, and those could be.
The legislature is meeting right now.
Right, exactly. And those will be addressed in the future, or can be addressed in the future. So this is what we're talking about as far as retroactive goes for what you have been asked to do up to this point that has not been adjusted to this point. And then, ongoing, and then address what comes next, if something comes next. So I too am comfortable with what you were asking for. I think it's a reasonable amount. I think it's justified by what's been placed at your door recently. And hopefully, we don't get more unfunded mandates placed at our door so that we have to revisit this, but if we do, then we can, if time becomes an issue again. So I'm also comfortable, I think, with 6%.
Thank you, appreciate it. So the maker of the motion has asked for an 8%. The second has asked for an 8% increase. And is there appetite for the maker of the motion to amend the motion?
Well, it looks like I need to amend my motion to 6%.
Retroactive?
Retroactive, thank you.
And is the second?
Can you include the date of retroactivity, retroactive to?
July 1st.
July 1st.
Of 2022?
Of 2022, sorry.
Good point.
I, I've been my second, and second this one?
So we, we have an amended motion to give a raise of 6% retroactive to July 1st. The seconder has confirmed that he would second the amended motion, and I would call for any other discussion. All those in favor of a 6% raise, retroactive to July 1st, that is Resolution 7597, say aye. Aye. Those say nay. Thank you, the motion is passed unanimously, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mayor, members of the council. I have, today is my drug court day, started at 8 o'clock. It'll go till 7 or 8 tonight.
You're excused.
If I, I just want to let you know, I'm, I'm out of here. I've got more court that's waiting for me back. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Mr. City Manager, we're going to, if I may, we have three items, two, three, and four, all that are dealing with performance evaluation. And before we do that, I would like to set the stage, if I may, by having a presentation regarding those three items altogether by Mark Ricardi, Richardi, our legal counsel, because our counsel is at risk. I mean, at advantage or whatever, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Thank you for having me today. So the agenda item covers both performance presentation and then an evaluation, and then also a resolution for salary adjustment for all three. I have been in touch with all three of these officials to discuss their proposed changes to the language of their contracts, because there's a lot of legalese in there that I'd need to advise the council on when that day comes, which will be soon. But because the salaries are in the contract, and there's certain limitations that we will want to be addressing in the contract language, I've been told that everyone here is in agreement that we do not need to go with Part C of each of these items. So in other words, there'd be, need be no vote today on the salary portion. So today is purely the qualitative evaluation. And then, I have met with two already, and I'll meet with the third one to go through their proposed contract changes so that when we come back on a, hopefully, a very soon agenda, you'll be able to vote on new salaries as well as any revisions to the contract language. Does that make sense?
Makes sense to me. Questions for the attorney? Councilwoman Wolfen.
Are all the contracts going to be the same for each person? Or are they, do you have to do a different contract?
That's a very good question, Councilwoman, and they are in great part similar. There's a lot of things that just are obviously the same. There's a few different benefits and perks, and a few different things that, that would maybe apply to a manager, but not an attorney or vice versa. So, so they're very, very close, but not, not boilerplate identical. They're a little tailored.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any observations or questions? So what I would say, if we go then towards A, B, that if there are any objections to leaving out the C of every one of our possible actions, those would be called the resolutions, 7598 and 7600 and 7599. If there's any objections to leaving that out, if you could please say so now. Seeing none, we will leave C resolutions out of the three presentations that are going to happen. So City Manager, if you'd like to do your presentation, we'd appreciate it.
Great. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Taylor Tetter, your city manager, here since 2021. First, I'd like to disclose pursuant to NRS 281A that I have a pecuniary. I have a pecuniary interest in this item, as my evaluation may determine potential increases in my compensation or my employment status. I'll be providing my performance presentation today to share with you and the public a little bit about my responsibilities, what I've accomplished over the past year, and goals for the future. So I get the question a lot, what does a City Manager do? So I believe that it means to provide leadership, vision, and focus on the results that are needed to create a better community, and through that, I supervise all departments and the day-to-day operations of the city, carrying out the policy set by the City Council, placing a great focus on recruiting top talent and retaining our existing capable workforce. Budget is another large item that I focus on, including the preparation each fiscal year, the execution of a budget that aligns with the City Council and communities' needs and priorities, and then ensuring that staff stay within the budget throughout the year. A crucial part of the City Manager's responsibilities is also communication with residents, existing and prospective businesses, and our community partners and stakeholders that the community and organization constantly interacts and works with. I also am involved in preparing City Council meeting agenda materials and review each agenda item for accuracy to ensure that the necessary information is included to share the whole story with you and our residents. So as an ICMA full member, the International City County Management Association, I'm bound by the Code of Ethics that is made up from the ICMA Board and made a pledge to uphold those principles in my conduct and decision-making. Through that, I recognize that leadership in a management structure is committed to equity, transparency, integrity, stewardship of public resources, political neutrality, and the respect of the rights and responsibility of elected officials and residents, strengthening our democratic local governance. So as a member working for a local government, I am required to follow all 12 tenets of the code, and I selected three that I exhibit what I think on a daily basis as examples for you on the screen, serving the best interests of the people, submitting policy proposals to elected officials, providing facts, technical and professional advice about policy options, and collaborating with them in setting goals for the community or organization, handling all matters of personnel on the basis of merit, so that fairness and partiality govern a member's decisions pertaining to appointments, pay adjustments, promotions, discipline, et cetera. Some other responsibilities that I carry out on a daily basis include looking back at what we have done well and what we can do better, forging a meaningful path forward on any initiative or project that we're doing here at the city, and I also ensure that all people I interact with are treated the way that I want to be treated, in a fair, balanced, and impartial manner. Developing and sustaining organizational excellence and promoting innovation, I find that empowering our city staff to investigate, research, and present new out-of-the-box ideas, to me, leads to further innovation for our organization, and promotion of a culture of inclusiveness, and allowing for an open exchange throughout all levels of the city helps further that notion. This includes making sure that staff strive for excellence in everything that they do, and every interaction with the public, how we complete projects and promotion of professional development and teamwork. I also ensure that laws and policies are enforced fairly throughout the community, and that the government runs ethically and transparently. Everyone has to be treated the same, and that can become exceptionally clear when a matter deals with an item in the city charter or the city code, and attempting to look into the future, how new processes or policies will affect our community, establishing a long-term vision. Bringing a community-wide perspective that considers past and future challenges to policy discussions, provides helpful institutional knowledge, which is gained through our long-tenured employees and previous meeting minutes, and even news articles from the past. So moving on to the organizational chart, so I have 10 immediate direct reports, which includes all eight of the directors, the executive administrative assistant, and the communications manager. However, I'm ultimately responsible for all of our 337 active employees, of which include 196 full-time employees and 141 part-time employees. I regularly interact with various community stakeholders, and would like to highlight several that I have featured here on the screen. I make myself available to meet and talk with residents and do so regularly. Nonprofits like Emergency Aid, Lend a Hand, the Senior Center, and more, I support and assist in their missions in any way that we can. With the Las Vegas Global Economic Alliance, I've served as a panelist the last two years on their local government economic development panel at their annual prospective event. I also work closely with the school district, Boulder City Waste, Solar Energy Partners, the Desert Research Institute, the Chamber of Commerce. I have monthly meetings with the CEO at the Chamber to make sure that we're working together. The Governor's Office of Economic Development, I've participated in several events, hosting international groups that have come out to the Hoover Dam to promote Southern Nevada, the state, and the country, just to promote that Boulder City and Nevada is a great place to do business. I meet with the area city and county managers monthly to discuss relevant issues among us and to build those relationships. I also have met with the National Park Service and Bureau of Land Management, as they're also some large community stakeholders, and the Bureau of Reclamation have worked closely with them over the past year and a half on their facility improvements to their front landscaping area to save water. The Boulder City Hospital, I worked with them on the proposed T-Mobile cell tower, and ultimately, they decided that wasn't the best interest of the residents in that area, so that was exciting to do that, and have worked with them on the Community Services Liaison, which was an ARPA-funded position to limit calls for service of police and fire EMS. So the thought behind that program and position is that people with mental health issues and other systemic issues can be solved at the root through this program that can, and position that can connect them with the resources that they need. And then the Historical Association, we had the recent support through the ARPA funds that the council approved. I facilitated that for them, and working with our legislators, made two presentations to the Senate Committee for Government Affairs and State Assembly Committee for Government Affairs, as pictured on the screen with Mayor Hardy. Both went very well. And I work with new and existing businesses, those looking to locate in Boulder City, and helping them connect with the resources that they need, and existing businesses and any expansion efforts that they're looking at doing, or connecting them with the right resources here at the city, like our economic development coordinator, to make sure they're getting what they need, and of course, the continued support of the new facility at the Railroad Museum. So I'd like to talk about employee relations accomplishments. So I've made two key hires, the Utilities Director in 2022, and our Public Works Director in 2023. We're currently in the final stages for hiring a new Finance Director, which we have the final interviews tomorrow, so very excited for that. Implementation of a new personnel policy was done, and that applies to all employees, and a revised purchasing policy, so that we ensure that we're purchasing the best goods and services at the best pricing available. I regularly evaluate and provide performance goals and feedback to my direct reports, and make sure that everyone throughout the organization is evaluating their employees on a regular basis. I recently added the Employee of the Quarter recognition. So we were doing Employee of the Year, but instead of just Employee of the Year, we've added Employee of the Quarter. So employees can be recognized throughout the year, and then at the end of the year, the Employee of the Year can be selected from the pool of four people that were employees of the Quarter. So it gives a little bit of anticipation and just greater recognition of the employees doing great work. I've also held management team retreats and goal-setting sessions, so communication between the departments and having a cohesive team has been a really big focus for me. Through a yearly retreat, goal-setting sessions, and team-building activities, our departments are on the same page and sharing crucial information with each other, and I'm happy to report that the department directors are working together and communicating with each other better than ever. We've also held employee and volunteer picnic and appreciation events to ensure that morale is good. I also practice an open-door policy. I try to make myself available to anyone that's needing to speak with me and ensure that I'm approachable. I continue to promote teamwork, and department heads are sharing their monthly status update matrix that they submit to me with all of the other department heads now through a SharePoint Drive. And then I want to touch a little bit on the eight collective bargaining units that we have. So we've been in negotiations over the past year, and are nearing completion of the remaining Teamsters Local 14 contracts, and successfully negotiated new collective bargaining agreements with the Police Protective Association, the Police Supervisors Association, Fire Captains, and Firefighters Bargaining Units. And the most meaningful part of the collective bargaining process for me was getting to know the employees better, and establishing mutual respect and understanding to work together to achieve the contracts that are in the best interest of the city and the employees. So as you know, there's many ways to get ahold of me, and I really try to keep you as the council informed through various means of email, phone, and text, agenda briefings. We hold those briefings before each council meeting, ensuring that surprises are limited, and providing an opportunity to share detailed information. The bi-monthly report, which provides details of what's occurring in each department on a regular basis, is also made available to you. The City Manager's Report is placed on the council agenda monthly, providing detailed financial reports of all funds, ARPA spending, capital improvement projects, and claims paid, which is essentially the city checkbook register. And then I also send out weekly status updates to you, typically providing a summary of notable meetings that I had during the week or project status updates. And then I also hold regular meetings with all of the council members and the mayor to go over policy implementation, projects, and items that the council should be aware of. So relations with residents. I've completed 18 episodes of Tetter Talks, which has been really exciting, and a way to share our story, talking with different department heads or different outside people to just make the community aware of what we're doing and what we're trying to do. I've also participated in various speaking engagements to community groups and other organizations, so that's always a nice way to also promote what we're doing here at the city. Talking about the fee schedule, making sure that all of our fees are in one place, and I'm really excited that it looks like we might get to adopt that with the final budget, so that our residents can have one place to look for all of their fees. I also participate in many community events, so various parades, the tree lighting. I serve as Hoover the Dog in the costume, and even though it's winter, it still is a little warm in there. And then I am a member of Sunrise Rotary. I have also garnered resident feedback through the ARPA Town Hall that we held last year, the various surveys on ARPA, Dog Park, Dark Skies, and the Pet Archway Survey. So some of those were more telling than others, but it's really valuable to receive the community feedback through the surveys and reaching out. I also wanted to talk about the ADA Task Force Working Group, so we are moving forward with the call for volunteers on that, so that we can have people that are aware of either their own, or their family member, or other people that they know's disabilities, so that we can make sure all of our projects are keeping that in mind, so we don't have ADA ramps leading into the middle of the street or other, you know, chairs with no armrests, things of that nature. So we make sure that we have a place that everyone can participate in. And then I've also had a regular editorial column in the Boulder City Review to further reach out to residents and talk about what we're doing here at the city. We also added Next Door to the city's toolbox to communicate with residents on a daily basis, which has been really successful, and I also make myself available to meet with residents, and end up doing that at least weekly, if not more. So moving on to policy execution, so we are in the final stages. It's been nearly a year planning for the annexation of 2,500 acres in the Eldorado Valley, and it's not only to protect our view of the beautiful valley, but also to solidify our city's boundaries, which will leave no unincorporated land between Boulder City and Henderson. I've also had regular meetings with various stakeholders, such as the Nevadans for the Common Good, Chamber of Commerce, city boards, commissions, and committee members, like the Utility Advisory Committee, to name a few. I also instituted a grant committee, so that's to ensure grants the city applies for that have financial implications clearly address the fact that we have to ensure we have the proper amount of matching funds, and ongoing costs associated with the grant. So it's a process to make sure that we can handle what we are signing up for on grant applications. And then the compensation study implementation, I was able to, with council approval, implement the pay ranges for all nonrepresented personnel in accordance with the Evergreen Solutions Compensation Study. When I first arrived at Boulder City, all positions were paid just one flat rate. There was no range, and the changes allow flexibility in both hiring and recruitment and retention. So there's now the latitude to hire within the range up to midpoint, and then that also allows for employees to be rewarded for meritorious service, or if they have large job duty changes, that increases their progressive responsibility. Utilities rate study, so in consultation with our Utilities Director and Finance Staff, we identified the need for a rate study sooner than planned, and this is currently underway, and Raff Tellis plans to have the study complete for your consideration in May, with all of that for electric, water, and wastewater. The water conservation efforts, the usage in the community for water is down 12% community-wide year-over-year, and 10% down in municipal usage. We are excited for our new rebate program for smart controllers for irrigation systems, and then also on smart thermostats, so that perhaps can reduce some of the use even further. The city is currently selecting a consultant to handle the golf course irrigation rehabilitation project at the municipal golf course, which is truly the biggest priority I had for the rescue plan dollars that were awarded to the city. It's $4.5 million that was approved for that project, and staff has been working closely with SNWA under my direction to receive rebates for turf removal, which will be coming before you soon. The inter-local agreement was just approved by the SNWA Board, and will be on a council agenda soon. And this also allows the latitude for the city to make appropriate decisions on turf removal, and it doesn't require that we remove all of it, but it does give us some latitude on choosing which areas, so that is promising. Related to the ARPA spend plan, that was developed and approved. $21.7 million of once-in-a-lifetime funds provided to the city during the pandemic. Several innovative programs and projects were established as part of that spending plan, including the Dog Park, which the fencing I just heard is getting ready to come in, so very excited to get that project done, the Electric Vehicle Pilot Program with the Police Department, the pickleball courts, which are moving forward, and the hospital position that I recently mentioned, the Community Resource Liaison, wastewater and water projects, and ADA improvements and facility renovations, and much more. So the spend plan was truly an exciting thing to work on, and I'm really excited to see the impact of those funds on the community. Additionally, achieving the strategic plan, we will be issuing a new RFP soon for a new strategic plan. This was the first strategic plan that I could find in the city's history that had deliverables and measurable goals that was actually completed. I am looking forward to the future development of the new strategic plan with, under this governing body, to work addressing your vision and goals for the community. We've also been working on facility improvements. Several have been completed, such as the upgraded security animal control, finishing the ADA upgrade and refurbishment of the council chambers, and there's more that will be starting soon. The Center for Fire Accreditation International, accreditation of the Fire Department that recently was awarded under my direction, we are now the 310th fire department in the world to receive the Center for Public Safety Excellence. Excellence Accreditation under my leadership. 12% of the United States population is protected by an accredited agency, and it is a constant improvement model and with renewal of accreditation every five years. And the part of maintaining the accreditation, it allows us to provide greater community alignment and encourages quality improvement, facilitates input from relationships with, with labor unions, and identifies areas of strengths and weaknesses. So, it is a continuous improvement plan so that the department will have to continue improving to maintain the accreditation. So, I am a huge proponent for the professional development of our staff members and hold myself to the same standard. So, I am a Certified Economic Developer through the International Economic Development Association and maintain that certification. I recently attended the Certified Economic Developer Exam and served as a proctor, helping the exam graders grade the exams and answering their questions, and that counts towards maintenance of my certification. I also have attended the Nevada League of Cities Conference, hosted a staff member from the National League of Cities to provide a tour of Boulder City so that they can learn more and stay up to date on best practices in, in local government. And with the council, I also gained half of the Certified Public Official designation at the Nevada League's Public Official Symposium, which I do plan to continue pursuing that further. And I've also been involved with the Nevada City County Managers Association, which is a state affiliate of the International Association. And another piece of exciting news. So, the International City County Managers Association has the voluntary credentialing program, and it recognizes members qualified by a combination of education and experience, adherence to high standards of integrity, and an assessed commitment to lifelong learning and professional development. So, in a week and a half on April 1st, I will be receiving the ICMA CM credential. So, I'm really excited about that because I've been looking forward to that for a long time. So, candidates holding a master's degree in public administration must have seven years of executive leadership experience in a city or county. And the program does require me to quantify the unique experience I offer, demonstrate adherence to the ethical standards, demonstrate a commitment to lifelong learning, structure a professional development plan, which I have done, and submit to peer review of professional development activities and learning. So, overall, I really believe that being a credential manager shows our community that I'm committed to maintaining the highest standards in the city management profession. So, moving on to some accomplishments in fiscal management. So, I did mention this before, the collective bargaining agreements and a little bit more on that. So, the agreements were last negotiated five years ago, but most of them had language that were 10-plus years old, which required a more in-depth line-by-line look. And I'm really happy to report that through the help of our city attorney and administrative services staff, that that goal is achieved. So, all of the language is updated and relevant to what our employees are doing now. And as I mentioned previously, the most meaningful part of that process was really getting to know the employees better and just establishing mutual respect and understanding to work together. So, on the FYI '24 budget process, my goal since arriving in Boulder City was to make the budget process more collaborative amongst the department heads. So, this year was the first for each of them to come up to the podium and tell you a little bit about their departments and, and share about their budget requests, which had, had not occurred before. I do look forward to continuing in the quest for collaboration and transparency related to the budget as a whole. So, I'm, I'm hopeful in times to come that we will be able to further that notion to make it a truly inclusive process, which we are working toward. Speaking of transparency, I'm so proud of the work that our finance department does and how accessible our public information is to the public through the ClearGov budget books and our public-facing portals, including Socrata and promotion of that. We, we truly are one of the most transparent cities that I've ever seen, but continue to look for ways that we can make the information more organized and accessible to the public. I am hopeful with our website refresh that we'll be doing, we can make things even easier for people to find and make it accessible and just organized in a way where they, the public can find the information they're looking for. And then with the American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA funds, it's really allowed the city to do projects and upgrade critical wastewater and water infrastructure much quicker than we would have without the funds. It essentially sped up our capital improvement plan on water and wastewater. So, these are truly once-in-a-lifetime funds that, that will create a meaningful impact on the residents, visitors, and business owners in Boulder City. The city did receive the prestigious Triple Crown Award from GFOA this year under my direction, making us one of 317 municipal organizations, the top 1% of all local governments in the nation to receive such an honor. It's truly a testament to the excellent work that our finance staff does safeguarding the taxpayers' public funds. We received the Dark Skies Grant. This is a $1.9 million grant, and it's technically a pass-through. So, it's from the Federal Economic Development Administration, and it goes through the state to Boulder City. It has been awarded from the EDA to the state, and coming up, you will also receive the funds as a sub-grantee on, on an upcoming agenda. But I'm really excited for this project because it means that we'll have a consistent aesthetically pleasing operational street lighting system, and it'll really bring uniformity and consistency to our street lighting system, which through survey data, it showed that the community was in favor of the warmer color of lights instead of the cooler. So, that's what will be done. The Burn Grant for Police Vehicles. So, this $400,000 grant stemmed from an email that I received from Susie Lee's office last year late on a Thursday, and we needed to submit ideas by the end of the next day. And knowing that we had difficulty upgrading our aging police fleet and the market conditions making it difficult to obtain police vehicles in general, I put together the application with Communications Manager LaPlante, and now we've received approval on that. We really look forward to utilizing the funds to ensure that our fleet is up to date, and each vehicle can allow officers to carry out their duties in an effective and efficient manner. Then we, we also implemented the Grant for Wastewater Infrastructure. This was a million dollars for bar screen replacement and improvements to our aeration ponds, and this would be necessary even if we did an upgrade to the wastewater treatment plant. So, it also allowed for the projects to be completed in a more timely fashion than if we were doing them ourselves. And then, city staff as a whole generates cost savings in the millions throughout the year, and I wanted to talk a little bit about what I've personally contributed, contributed to saving the money, the city money as well. Through cross-shopping and right sizing of vehicles, I was able to suggest and create $100,000 in savings related to the purchase of new city vehicles below our budget authorized for the purchases. And that, that really helped just by selecting different types of vehicles and finding ones that were available that we could get at a lower price under state contract. I've also reduced unneeded software that the city subscribed to, resulting in $40,000 in savings this year. Also identified work that could be done in-house without the use of outside design services, which resulted in $60,000 in savings. Also generated overtime savings by timing the departure and hiring times of retiring employees so that we were able to save $65,000. And providing direction for identification of savings and adjustments related to the Lend-A-Han Project, City Hall Rehabilitation Projects, and direction of several items that required specialized skill that we were actually able to do in-house. So, that saved over $337,000 this year. And finally, with each high-profile recruitment process for directors while I've been at the city, we've actually done all of those in-house, which resulted in a $90,000 at least of savings. Previous practice included utilizing consultants for, for recruitment processes. So, I would like to talk about some of the goals that I have for the future. Something that's on everyone's mind, the new city pool and development of Track 350. So, Toll Brothers has been in contact with, with staff, and they have maintained that they'd like to resume conversations in the spring, which is rapidly approaching. Other goals that I have for the new pool is to identify any grants or outside funding that we can receive, as well as additional funding streams just to jumpstart that project and bring the much-needed new pool to our community in any way that we can. Another goal for the future is retention and attraction of high-quality talent. So, making sure that we remain competitive with pay and benefits and a supportive work environment for everyone to thrive in. Strengthening working relationships with our area partners. While we have great relationships with our stakeholders and area communities, we can always improve and ensure that we're working together on regional issues. A coordinated plan for city-owned facilities and uses. So, with several new members of our engineering staff, I'd like to leverage their expertise and coordinate a focused plan on what we're doing with our underutilized facilities that the city owns. It really will ensure that our public funds are put to good use if we are making improvements at certain facilities and making sure everything's utilized at its highest and best use. Enhanced communication within city partner, city departments to residents. So, I've touched on this a little bit earlier in the presentation. I do plan to increase the amount of communication that we have with anyone doing business with the city. So, that's through feedback, surveying, and enhanced communication through reaching out, and that would be on minor and major projects that might affect residents and business owners. Another item that I have a goal for is to complete evaluation of department structures and recommend changes related to that. So, over the past two years, I have been studying creating different scenarios for minor restructuring of the city's departments. And over the next year, I would like to move forward with optimizing our structure to just make sure that we're, we're providing the optimal service delivery and workflow. Continuing to support staff in their professional, professional development endeavors. No one's ever done learning, and to ensure that we have the most knowledgeable staff, I, I really want to continue to support and encourage their professional development and learning opportunities. Another item I'd like as a goal, to work to identify further cost savings in citywide expenses and software. Occasionally, we will find some products and services that may overlap between departments. With, with the enhanced communication between the departments and a team environment, I'm really confident that we can identify further savings to achieve over the next year. I briefly mentioned this earlier, the website refresh. So, this is included in our fee that's paid to Civic Plus, our website provider, and includes a full website refresh on a regular basis, and ours is due now. So, my goal with the refresh is to make all of our open, open government components and various information easier for the public to access and find. If you have to click several times to get where you're going, studies show that many people just give up, and then they ended up, they end up calling. So, we can limit the interactions by making sure that people aren't getting frustrated because they can't find what they're looking for. Objective performance measurement of employees. So, I've already begun changing the structure of how non-represented employees are valued, evaluated. Using an objective tool in conjunction with peer reviews, it'll really lend to more information that can be utilized in evaluation of employees. And a merit pool structure for pay increases will also provide motivation to do well on a performance review with a rewarding outcome that's not just a piece of paper that would actually tie value to it. And then, a really big goal, spending all of the ARPA funds by December 31st, 2026. It takes considerable time, planning, in many cases, extensive engineering work on a lot of the large projects that we have planned to get off the ground. And in the coming months, you'll see really large portions of the money being spent and meet our deadline way ahead of December 2026. So, this is something we're constantly monitoring and making sure that we will get those funds spent, because if we don't, we have to send them back. And finally, I really want to continue the excellent communication efforts with the city council, residents, businesses, and community partners. Communication's truly key with telling our story and sharing successes and project statuses with all. So, first, I would just like to thank you all so much. I truly enjoy leading our team of exceptional staff here in Boulder City, and I'm looking forward to working on those future goals in the coming months to further our transparency, accessibility, and increasing our level of service to residents and businesses in our community. I truly feel privileged to be your city manager for Boulder City, and our city staff really allows me to thrive in my position as I can count on them to achieve milestones and accomplish really high-quality work. I appreciate the support and insight that I've gained from working with each and every one of you and look forward to what we can accomplish in the future. Again, thank you so much for your continued support and excellent leadership of our unique, beautiful, historic Boulder City. So, I stand for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Mr. Tedder, that I looked at as A. B, which is the annual performance evaluation as we ask questions or have observations, if you're willing to stay there and be evaluated and ask questions. Questions. Councilwoman.
I think it's just a few things that have stood out for me, City Manager Tedder. I, I've been in this process now two years. This is my second year in a row, and watching you grow as a city manager and seeing your strengths, I do appreciate your self-starting and willingness to look at projects and people in a variety of ways and to help solve problems. Things that stood out to me that I see that you're doing that I, as a council person, appreciate, I appreciate your Tedder Talks because that does help the community, and it's a way to be able to give them information in, in a way that they're, a lot of them are used to. So, I appreciate that. I appreciate the fee schedules to be able to put them all in one place and to give us a good look at it. And I know that that was something that when you came here, you, you looked at and you were surprised, and so you took, can you say the bull by the horns? And, and you looked at our fees and you made sure that we had them all in one place. I appreciate that. Appreciate the feedback for, for our community and from our community and that you truly do look at it because that's really important. I, I like that you have a piece in the paper. I like that we do town halls. I like that we send out surveys when things are really important and that you value that input. Maybe not something that everybody knows, but I've seen for myself is when there are concerns in the community and, and I receive emails. I know that often I come to you and say, "Hey, this is happening," and, and you address it, and you're good, and you're prompt about it, and I appreciate that because a lot of times you are the liaison between what we do up here and what happens in the community. I love that you have a grant committee. There are monies out there, and we've gotten some of those monies, the Dark Skies money of 1.9, the wastewater of 1 million. You have your, I think it's BRIN Grant Police also. And every dollar brought in, in a grant helps us to be able to function in a better and more effective way for our community, and that takes time. Grants are not easy, and I know that. I liked that you said that you were going to evaluate department structure and recommend changes. Departments run in different ways as time goes by because just as we saw from our fee schedule, you no longer need a CD to put records on. I mean, you can do it digitally. There are things that change, and so there are things that could be done differently. And so, I appreciate that you would be looking at that and doing that and absolutely make sure our ARPA funds are spent and our projects are completed by 2026. And thank you very much for everything you've been doing.
Thank you. Thank you. Other observations? Councilwoman Booth.
Well, having been on the city council just four months, so I'm kind of new and getting to work with you. I have really truly appreciated all your information and communication. I think that's so important, the communication portion of it, and I feel like I can just talk to you and I'm, you're never in too big of a hurry to answer a question for me. So, for me, it's been the communication and the openness, and I love the way you treat the community. I know you came to our community club meeting, and all the ladies just thought you were wonderful because you, you have that warm personality. So, I, I really truly appreciate that, and I'm really impressed on the ICMA. I think that's just amazing that you've gone after that and you have achieved that. So, that's a great accomplishment. So, that's what I had to say.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Other observations? Councilwoman Fox.
I just want to say thank you for-
I just want to say thank you for all the work that you've done in the short amount of time you've been here. The community and the outreach that you do for them, it says a lot about you, and it, I think we're all lucky to have you in the position that you are. So that's pretty much, I mean, they pretty, they said all the great things, so I don't want to repeat, you know, another 10 minutes of that stuff, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Taylor.
Thank you. Councilman Walton.
Although we know we grow tired of somebody giving us compliments, right? Not that I would know what that's like. So yeah, Taylor, we, Mr. City Manager, we do appreciate the, the culture, insights, and the paradigm that you bring to Boulder City, to the, to City Hall, right, to the municipal government. I think echoing what's been said, we all recognize that and are appreciative of that. Couple highlights that I'd like to, to point out, and you know, although two of them are sitting right here in this room, you have a real unique ability, and I find that is truly unique and uncommon in municipal government, is the ability to find and hire great people. And in, as you said in your presentation, the last two are, fit that bill. And so, you know, I'm gonna not give too many kudos to them right now because we're not talking about them, but, but you found them and you hired them, and truly great assets to the community through your ability to recognize and to hire. And so thank you for, for that, for that unique skill. It's good to be able to settle. Did we finish the Teamsters collective bargaining agreement yet, Group 14?
One has a vote this evening, and then there's two, two others.
Okay, well, with those accepted from my comments, all the others have been settled without reaching impasse, right?
Correct.
And that's a significant accomplishment. And as you commented, there's a lot of complications in navigating those negotiations, and we appreciate doing that and treating the employees as a group and as individuals, as a partner through that rather than an adversary. Again, that's that paradigm shift and that outlook that we appreciate as leaders of the community that we want to see filter in all the way through. Your outreach to the community is truly, I think, exemplary as well. All the ways that you reach out to them and the image that you present is reflective of what city council wants to present to the community. And so you're a great representative, representation of that to the community. So keep, keep that up. You know, and I'm trying to stick with the evaluated factors here and the headings promotes training and development opportunities for all employees. I, I'm, I'm glad that you mentioned that that's a future goal. I put that at this point, you know, not really observed. I don't know how, how much that's been going on. That's a difficult one for me to rate, but that you have it as a continued goal, I think, is important, important for the development of the assets, the personnel, the human assets of our city government in ways that they can be better at their professional expertise or their interaction with the community or whatever aspect that training is in. So thank you for prioritizing that. Of course, the annexation of the 2,500 acres and navigating that with BLM and City of Henderson and all of that is very substantial to Boulder City for decades, who knows how many years to come. That was a big deal, and we're glad that that was brought to conclusion. Well done on that. And as Councilmember Booth commented, the ICMA credential is, is a big deal. I, I kind of understand the credentialing process a little bit and realize as, as you emphasize, it's an assessed commitment to lifelong learning and professional development. So clearly you had to demonstrate to them, right, what you've done to this point and your plans going forward. And, and that brings a culture of excellence, right? Because as the, as the head of the organization, essentially you establish that culture by your example and by what you do. And seeking that really does establish a culture of excellence within Boulder City, which is really what we want, right? Culture of excellence at City Hall, a culture of excellence among our personnel and among all the staff. And, and so by being that example is very strong. That's a great leadership demonstration. I hope that in some way we can share in the celebration of that recognition and that accomplishment. So later on, you can let us know how we can do that. And the goals are right on the money. I appreciate all that you listed. To me, one that warrants being very specifically mentioned and pursued is that drum that I'll continue to beat about customer service. And not only talking customer service that, but measuring customer service and finding ways how it can be approved based on our objective measurements from direct feedback from our customers. And I know that that's in your mindset of leadership, but without being specific on it, we might miss the mark. So anyway, that's the conclusion of my comments. Mr. Mayor and Mr. Tetter, thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Thank you. So my, did you use the word Click Fix in your presentation?
I think I might have mentioned it once, but yes, C Click Fix is our, you know, one, one-stop shop for getting anything you need taken care of by the city.
So do you take credit for that, too?
I don't. It was here when, when I arrived, but we have worked on promoting it and marketing that to, to limit the calls, especially on the weekends. So that, that has improved.
I appreciate that. Listening to the presentation, I've decided that we're going to change the format of the state of the city, and you're going to do it. And, and I'll just tell anecdotes. So I had a conversation with a constituent, and constituent had a problem, and I said, well, you need to talk to somebody and send him down to talk to somebody. And then I find out that somebody, you already knew about it, already was working on it, and already had some kind of feel for what was going on. And for me, that's important, you know, that it's not just the city councilman or the mayor that hears challenges, but they're not only listened to but appreciated and, and respected. And then another instance where I said, you know, we need to protect the cars coming out of Bristol Cone and paint the curb, and you, the city manager, says, I can take care of that. And I don't know if he actually painted the curb or had someone back there smiling who did it. But nonetheless, it happened. And, and for me, that's one of those things that's constituent service that is priceless for what you do, and I appreciate it. So yes, thank you for the presentation, albeit long enough to make three State of the Cities, but that's okay. Where we stand now, then, is the evaluation. And I asked the presenters, the people, to give some kind of self-evaluation, and sometimes I agree and sometimes I don't with self-evaluations, but I think you underestimated yourself on your self-evaluation. And so I bumped you up, and I, I don't know the exact format that you all want me to do, but.
Mr. Bolt can.
Mr. Bolt?
Yeah.
Don't go far.
We have a couple options for you. One would be the electronic version through your devices. You can make those scores, and, and then we'll be able to add those up and come up with one overall score. You can be a paper version if you like. We'll take a few moments to add those scores up and, and again, come with an overall average score that the council has provided.
So if we have our devices, or does someone want to take notes and we just go down? Do you want the added up scores or the each and every one of the individual characteristics and not? Can I just cut to the chase and give you the added up scores of one, two, three, four, five, and whatever?
You can. You can give those to me, either the electronic version, or you can give me if you have it on paper, however you want to do it. Because again, it's not, you know, five, five evaluations, the council's evaluation, so I'll be bringing those together into one. What's ever most convenient for you, if you've got it on your device? I'm sorry.
So, so will the bands of the world be able to put it together? When we put it in, it'll all figure it out?
Yes, sir. It'll figure out the individual overall score for that individual, then we just have to take those five scores, add them up very quickly, come up with the overall average score.
Is this done electronically, or is it done?
The five individuals are added up electronically. We couldn't figure out a way to get them to take those five individuals and add those up, but it won't take but a few moments for us to do that.
Could, could I get a paper one? For some reason, I like the idea of .5 sometimes.
Yes, so do I.
And because I see progress and maybe a little bit of progress that could continue, but it's not a four or it's, you know, it's somewhere in between. So I just like the idea of .5, and that's not available on the electronic.
Right. I can give you a paper version.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Major, the acting city manager for this one?
That is correct.
Do you have anything you want to say in defense of or because of?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you.
If you have the paper ones now, do you want them turned in?
Please.
So I'll take a, I'll take a paper. So for those of us that have our computers open, and I click on something, but it doesn't give me the, or maybe it does.
There's a different link.
There's a different link.
Yes, if you go to his email.
So we're going to take a recess, if that's okay, and then we'll work on our individual processes and then turn them in. So we are now in recess.
Yeah, it's, it's on his email. So on his email, he.
What I'll do is I'll ask somebody else, I don't want to do this.
See this email? 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 See this email?
So I'll take a... So I'll take a paper. So for those of us that have our computers open, and I click on something, but it doesn't give me the... or maybe it does.
There's a different link.
There's a different link.
Yes, if you go to his email.
So, we're going to take a recess, if that's okay, and then we'll work on our individual processes and then turn them in. So we are now in recess.
Yeah, it's on his email. So on his email, he...
What I'll do is I'll ask somebody else if they want to do this.
See this email?
So I'll take a... So for those of us that have our computers open, and I click on something, but it doesn't give me the... or maybe it does.
There's a different link.
There's a different link.
Yes, if you go to his email.
So we're going to take a recess, if that's okay, and then we'll work on our individual processes and then turn them in. So we are now in recess.
Yeah, it's on his email. So on his email, he...
What I'll do is I'll ask somebody else if they want to do this.
See this email?
So I'll take a... So for those of us that have our computers open, and I click on something, but it doesn't give me the... or maybe it does.
There's a different link.
There's a different link.
Yes, if you go to his email.
So we're going to take a recess, if that's okay, and then we'll work on our individual processes and then turn them in. So we are now in recess.
Yeah, it's on his email. So on his email, he...
What I'll do is I'll ask somebody else if they want to do this.
See this email?
So I'll take a... So for those of us that have our computers open, and I click on something, but it doesn't give me the... or maybe it does.
There's a different link.
There's a different link.
Yes, if you go to his email.
So we're going to take a recess, if that's okay, and then we'll work on our individual processes and then turn them in. So we are now in recess.
Yeah, it's on his email. So on his email, he...
What I'll do is I'll ask somebody else if they want to do this.
See this email?
So I'll take a... So for those of us that have our computers open, and I click on something, but it doesn't give me the... or maybe it does.
There's a different link.
There's a different link.
Yes, if you go to his email.
So we're going to take a recess, if that's okay, and then we'll work on our individual processes and then turn them in. So we are now in recess.
Yeah, it's on his email. So on his email, he...
What I'll do is I'll ask somebody else if they want to do this.
See this email?
So I'll take a... So for those of us that have our computers open, and I click on something, but it doesn't give me the... or maybe it does.
There's a different link.
There's a different link.
Yes, if you go to his email.
So we're going to take a recess, if that's okay, and then we'll work on our individual processes and then turn them in. So we are now in recess.
Yeah, it's on his email. So on his email, he...
What I'll do is I'll ask somebody else if they want to do this.
See this email?
So I'll take a... So for those of us that have our computers open, and I click on something, but it doesn't give me the... or maybe it does.
There's a different link.
There's a different link.
Yes, if you go to his email.
So we're going to take a recess, if that's okay, and then we'll work on our individual processes and then turn them in. So we are now in recess.
Yeah, it's on his email. So on his email, he...
What I'll do is I'll ask somebody else if they want to do this.
See this email?
So I'll take a... So for those of us that have our computers open, and I click on something, but it doesn't give me the... or maybe it does.
There's a different link.
There's a different link.
Yes, if you go to his email.
So we're going to take a recess, if that's okay, and then we'll work on our individual processes and then turn them in. So we are now in recess.
Yeah, it's on his email. So on his email, he...
What I'll do is I'll ask somebody else if they want to do this.
See this email?
So I'll take a... So for those of us that have our computers open, and I click on something, but it doesn't give me the... or maybe it does.
There's a different link.
There's a different link.
Yes, if you go to his email.
So we're going to take a recess, if that's okay, and then we'll work on our individual processes and then turn them in. So we are now in recess.
Yeah, it's on his email. So on his email, he...
What I'll do is I'll ask somebody else if they want to do this.
See this email?
So I'll take a... So for those of us that have our computers open, and I click on something, but it doesn't give me the... or maybe it does.
There's a different link.
There's a different link.
Yes, if you go to his email.
So we're going to take a recess, if that's okay, and then we'll work on our individual processes and then turn them in. So we are now in recess.
Yeah, it's on his email. So on his email, he...
What I'll do is I'll ask somebody else if they want to do this.
See this email?
So I'll take a... So for those of us that have our computers open, and I click on something, but it doesn't give me the... or maybe it does.
There's a different link.
There's a different link.
Yes, if you go to his email.
So we're going to take a recess, if that's okay, and then we'll work on our individual processes and then turn them in. So we are now in recess.
Yeah, it's on his email. So on his email, he...
What I'll do is I'll ask somebody else if they want to do this.
See this email?
So I'll take a... So for those of us that have our computers open, and I click on something, but it doesn't give me the... or maybe it does.
There's a different link.
There's a different link.
Yes, if you go to his email.
So we're going to take a recess, if that's okay, and then we'll work on our individual processes and then turn them in. So we are now in recess.
Yeah, it's on his email. So on his email, he...
What I'll do is I'll ask somebody else if they want to do this.
See this email?
So I'll take a... So for those of us that have our computers open, and I click on something, but it doesn't give me the... or maybe it does.
There's a different link.
There's a different link.
Yes, if you go to his email.
So we're going to take a recess, if that's okay, and then we'll work on our individual processes and then turn them in. So we are now in recess.
Yeah, it's on his email. So on his email, he...
What I'll do is I'll ask somebody else if they want to do this.
See this email?
So I'll take a... So for those of us that have our computers open, and I click on something, but it doesn't give me the... or maybe it does.
There's a different link.
There's a different link.
Yes, if you go to his email.
So we're going to take a recess, if that's okay, and then we'll work on our individual processes and then turn them in. So we are now in recess.
Yeah, it's on his email. So on his email, he...
What I'll do is I'll ask somebody else if they want to do this.
See this email?
So I'll take a... So for those of us that have our computers open, and I click on something, but it doesn't give me the... or maybe it does.
There's a different link.
There's a different link.
Yes, if you go to his email.
So we're going to take a recess, if that's okay, and then we'll work on our individual processes and then turn them in. So we are now in recess.
Yeah, it's on his email. So on his email, he...
What I'll do is I'll ask somebody else if they want to do this.
See this email?
So I'll take a...
I think we're still on item B.
Okay. So if we're on item B... I'm not ready. So where did you hide my... Where did you?
So on this, you just want to swipe up.
Oh, swipe up and over.
So there's Outlook there, and you're... so when you want to fill out your next one, it's in your email. You just click on the next one.
Okay, so I'm... People around me, we all had the opportunity to evaluate the city manager, and the composite score out of five was 4.63. Thank you. Appreciate it. Do you have anything you'd like to say?
Thank you so much. Nine words on the evaluation, and I truly love coming to work every day here to make the lives of our residents and employees better, and just want to keep up the momentum that we have. So thanks again.
Thank you very much. We'll now move to... Item two... Item three, rather. Matters pertaining to performance evaluation. The city attorney, Brittany Walker. And she is here, ready to do her shtick.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. I'm here to give you my annual performance report for the last year. Before I do so, I would like to quickly disclose pursuant to NRS 281A that I have a pecuniary interest in this item as it may determine potential increases to my salary or my employment status. I'd like to begin with just a brief overview of my organizational chart. So my city attorney's office consists of myself, a paralegal, and a contracted criminal prosecutor. Bernadette Almeida is my paralegal. She's been with me for a little over a year. And we use a gentleman by the name of Gary Booker as our prosecutor, and he's been with the city since 2005. Pursuant to Section 15 of the city charter, my duties are acting as legal advisor to the city council and all other public officers, drafting and reviewing all contracts and other legal documents, as well as prosecuting all violations of city ordinances. I'd like to begin with defining excellence for my position. Excellence for my position is providing clear and competent legal advice to the city council, public officers, and departments, ensuring diligent communication with the city manager and council regarding litigation and legal issues impacting the city, rendering independent professional judgment and candid advice, referring to law, moral, economic, social, and political factors, diligently and expediently prosecuting all misdemeanor violations, and reviewing and drafting all contracts to best protect the city. I thought it would also be helpful to briefly go over the Nevada Rules of Professional Conduct. As a lawyer and member of the State Bar of Nevada, I am also bound to follow the rules of professional conduct, and they are also what guide me as an attorney in my practice of law. Under these rules, a lawyer is a member of the legal profession, is a representative of clients, an officer of the legal system, and a public citizen having a special responsibility for the quality of justice. My representational functions include being an advisor, an advocate, and a counselor. Rule 1.3... 1.13 is a rule I would like to highlight with an Article 1, which governs the client-attorney relationship. And it is the organization as a client, which is particularly relevant here, as my client is the city, the entity itself acting through its duly authorized constituents, being the mayor and city council, as well as the city manager. So rather than any individual council member being a client, the client is the entity. Under this role, I also have a duty of competence, which means having the legal knowledge, skill, and preparation reasonably necessary for the representation. I have a duty of diligence, a duty of communication, which means I promptly inform the client when decisions require client consent, such as settlement, that I consult with the client about the means by which objectives are accomplished, mediation versus litigation, as an example, and keeping my client reasonably informed. I do this through litigation briefings frequently with council and on an as-needed basis as we need decisions to be made. In addition, I have a duty of confidentiality. Article 2 of the Nevada Rules of Professional Responsibility describe my role as the counselor and advisor. As an advisor, it recommends that I render independent professional judgment and candid advice, which refers to law, moral, economic, social, and political factors. I provide this advice to the mayor and city council, and all the city officers and department heads. I frequently get a request for legal advice, I would say one to two a day, from one department or another. And some examples of that are for mayor and council. I provide legal advice during city council meetings, ensure our meetings are conducted in compliance with open meeting law. I also draft ethics disclosures and do ethics analysis if there is an issue coming before council in which the Ethics Chapter of NRS would require disclosure and possibly abstention. I also advise the departments on various code interpretations. A highlight would also be assisting the fire department with launching the AED program. I assisted them in drafting that agreement and getting that out to businesses. I also drafted a license agreement for the Bureau of Reclamation so that they could use our utility easements for fiber installation, help the utilities department with water waste fine implementation after our water conservation code was updated. So these are just examples of how I provide that legal advice. I also oversee litigation and claims. The majority of litigation that the city undergoes is defended by Poole Pact. Poole Pact is our insurance pool. It's a group of municipalities and other local jurisdictions that have pooled their resources together and to provide insurance for the city. They cover all of our personal injury type of lawsuits and any employment-related claims that are... that are not labor, collective bargaining-related contracts. So currently, we have two personal injury claims pending and four employment-related claims pending that are being defended by Poole Pact. We also use outside counsel. Poole Pact does not cover equitable claims or breach of non-employment contract claims. So when I first assumed this position in October of 2020, we had five pieces of litigation which we retained outside counsel on. I'm happy to report I was able to settle three of those cases, and we have made attempts at settlement on all of them. I do expect resolution on the remaining two cases this year. I also thought it would be helpful to give an overview of the history of what we have spent on outside counsel fees. There has been a lot of communication with... from the public, and I've heard a lot of concerns from the public about what the city is spending on outside counsel, and I do share those concerns. As I mentioned, when I assumed this position, we were in a perfect storm of five different pieces of litigation. So as you can see here in this chart, our litigation fees in fiscal year '21 were very high. But if you look over time, we have used outside counsel historically, and like many jurisdictions, because it's one attorney in this office, we often need the assistance of outside counsel to defend the city. Even larger cities like the city of Henderson, city of Las Vegas, they have 25 to 40 staff attorneys. They still will use outside counsel when there's matters of complex litigation. I thought it would be helpful to also break this down by category, because our outside counsel is not just litigation. It's also our acting prosecutor. It's Fisher Phillips who's here today, our employment counsel. He also provides us legal advice with our collective bargaining agreements and other employment issues that Poole Pact does not defend. And I'll go into this a little bit more in detail later, but I have recently retained outside counsel using my professional services budget to assist us in bolstering our real estate and energy contracts. So as you can see here, though, the majority of the costs are litigation when those costs are very high. And so what I've done in my time here is worked to bolster our contracts to help us avoid litigation in the future. Fiscal management, I just wanted to again give a brief history of the office, going back to fiscal year 2019. You can see that the costs have decreased through this fiscal year and continue. It will be under, I believe, $400,000 for this coming fiscal year as budgeted. And so I've really looked to look at ways to cut expenses and looked at what's really necessary for my department, and also use professional services in a way that can set the city up for success. I also anticipated future litigation. So a lot of law firms cost anywhere from $400 to $600 an hour for an attorney. So litigation costs can get very expensive very quickly. I looked at what other municipalities have done to try to control those costs, and found that the Clark County did a request for statement of qualifications from qualified law firms. And as a condition of responding to that request, the firm had to be willing to agree to limit their fees. And so modeling Clark County's request for proposals, I sent one out on behalf of... Well, the council approved for Boulder City, and we received two responses, one from the firm Wiley Peterson and one from Hanley Law Firm. So in the event the city gets... city gets sued again, which there haven't been new lawsuits since I've assumed this position, we have council ready to defend the city at a limit of 220 per hour, which will save us exponentially in our costs. That agreement would still come before council, so they're not retained officially. If we retain them, that would have to be done in a council meeting, but they're aware that the fees would be limited. If there is more complex litigation that requires a specialized law firm that may require more per hour, then the council can do that still. Back to contracts, I would say 80% of my practice is transactional in nature, and as I said previously, when you have well-drafted contracts, you stay out of the courtroom. So, I looked to outside counsel to help update our solar leases and form easement agreements. To my knowledge, these agreements had never been reviewed by outside counsel, and I thought it was particularly important to have outside counsel with real estate and energy expertise. So, we, the council, through my recommendation, hired the law firm of Sklar Williams, and they helped us to update our solar leases, bolstering our indemnification provisions, ensuring that the city can retain ownership of the solar panels or battery storage at the end if we want to, or we can require them to remove it and restore it to original condition, which we may want to do considering panels, their average life is about 25 years. In general, I review all contracts on behalf of the city. This past year, I reviewed 225 contracts. That includes all our contracts with design professionals, services contracts, purchase of goods, inter-local agreements, requests for proposals, all of that. I also provide prosecution, my office also oversees the prosecution, I should say, for the city. Our philosophy is to fix the problem, not get convictions, and we like to utilize alternative sentencing. We have a really successful recovery court program, and my office's role in that is to identify candidates that would be successful in that program and recommend those to the court for inclusion in that program. We also, if they're not available for that program, we have different counseling services we can recommend as a part of our plea agreements, classes that individuals can take, and so we do encourage that. Ordinance drafting and review. I review or draft most of the ordinances that come before you for adoption. Ordinance updates that we've completed are, the public works permit was most recent, and the water conservation update as well. I also have some ordinance updates in progress. Our code in many chapters has not been updated in some cases since 1969. The more recent updates I see that are substantive occurred in 2005. So, really, there are several chapters within our code that really could use considerable rewrites and updates, and we are working on that. One is our abatement ordinance. It currently doesn't comply with NRS. In addition, there's oversight with our animal breeding permit. We allow animal breeding, but we don't have a permit for it, so I'll be briefing you on that before anything comes before you, but those are, those are just ordinance updates that we're looking at right now. Modernization. When I first came into this position, we did not subscribe to any online legal research tool, so one of the first things I did was subscribe to Westlaw, which is a premier legal research tool. It gives you access to the latest cases, statutes across the nation, as well as treatises on municipal law so that I can help, so that can help me stay up to date on updates in municipal law. And then, I'd like to go over my accomplishments just this year and highlight what I think has provided real value to the city, and that is providing legal advice and guidance for the successful negotiation and finalization of four labor contracts, with four continuing to be negotiated by the city manager. I led the renegotiation of three solar lease option agreements, and this resulted in over $200,000 of additional revenue for fiscal year 23 and 24, and in increased option payments, with a potential of several million dollars in revenue for future fiscal years due to the addition of an annual fee per megawatt of battery storage capacity that was not previously included in the lease. I also assisted the police department in developing an asset forfeiture program that was, has already successfully taken title to one motorcycle, two cars, one trailer, and a bank account with $45,000 in U.S. currency. I've made our community safer by removing a Boulder City business from a list that was maintained by the Department of Parole and Probation as a housing for felons who are released from prison. There was a local motel that was accepting residents of recently released prisoners. There is a statute in Nevada that limited three of these types of individuals from living in one location. So, I made the Department of Parole and Probation aware of that, and I made the local business aware of that. They rectified the issue and asked a lot of the individuals staying there to leave, and then the Department of Parole and Probation removed that business from their list as an acceptable residence. I also negotiated the lease and easement agreement with the Southern Nevada Water Authority, which was just granted for them to build transmission facilities connecting Boulder Flats Solar Project to their, to their proposed transmission facility build. They are proposing to sell that power to all the purveyor members, and we negotiated a provision in there that we would, if we were to buy power, it would be at the same cost as S&amp;W A pays, which will save the rate payers money in the long term. I advised on the RFP for the former UNLV lease site. I negotiated with UNLV, and they relinquished their lease with the city, and we were able to RFP that site, and that resulted in potential revenues of 1.2 million per year if it's leased to the chosen RFP awardee. And they also agreed to pay $500,000 upon execution and $200,000 in interim payments. I also represent the city. During the Nevada legislative sessions, I represented the city previously in 2021. This picture here is myself and the Senate Majority Leader. We were both with child, and so I thought it was a fun picture to share. I, so far, have presented Senate Bill 23 to the Senate Committee on Government Affairs, provided monthly reports to council on proposed bills, and obtained direction where necessary on legislation. I will be visiting Carson City again to communicate with legislators and possibly testify before legislative committees if necessary. It's also very important for me as an attorney to continue building my practice. They call it a practice for a reason. We're continually learning and improving as attorneys, and so I attend various conferences to gain continuing legal education credits. The Public Lawyers Conference each year is a great example where we learn updates in various areas of law affecting public lawyers. I also attended the 2022 Colorado River Water Users Association Conference, which is super valuable in learning what we're going to be doing with the upcoming cuts to the water supply and the water shortage. I'm planning to attend the 2023 Labor and Employment Law Conference in Las Vegas, and I also attend quarterly meetings with local government attorneys. I recently hosted the last meeting with the city of Las Vegas, city of Henderson, and North Las Vegas attorneys, and we use that opportunity to share what we're facing, what different issues we're working on, and it's incredibly valuable to maintain those relationships and to learn the latest updates. My goals for the next year are to continue updating the Boulder City municipal code, update our construction contract. I'd like to develop a contract specific to construction management services that we frequently use, assist in finalizing the four remaining labor contracts, improve my community resources page on my website so that people have more readily available access to different legal resources they can have. I also would like to work toward a long-term solution for the expiring hangar leases that is beneficial to all involved. So, in closing, I just want to thank mayor and council for giving me this opportunity to continue as your city attorney. I love my job and really want to do the best I can for the city, and look forward to hearing your feedback in ways that I can improve and continue, hopefully, to deliver additional value for the city.
Thank you. Questions, observations?
Councilman Walton.
Ms. City Attorney, if I can address Mr. Mayor. You know, it's not quite as exciting as a presentation when you talk about attorney work as it is for the city managers, so we apologize for not being as, you know, full of comments, but thank you for the service that you've offered over this past year that we're evaluating, and, you know, a lot of good things we recognize, and particularly, we appreciate the transparency that you provided for outside counsel, the costs, and that has been a topic of conversation amongst many people in the community, and, you know, we have a city attorney. Why do we spend so much out here on these other things? And it's hard to really comprehend the complexity of the variety of issues that come before a municipality. And, you know, staff hours and money really is the bottom line that restricts what we can accomplish here, right? So, there's a lot that needs to be done beyond what we have staff hours and funding to do. So, we either have to put money or hours to it, and so we recognize that's just kind of how the city's model works, and we appreciate that you're mindful of managing that in a prudent fashion as well. Thank you. The land contract refinements, you know, it's great to have seen that there were opportunities missed, and to capture those that resulted in real dollars to the funds of the city is a big deal. Consistency, the variety of permits, you know, it's good to see that there's some consistency there and some clarity, and the legal work required to help them arrive there is important for our customer service, right, as it gets to the end users. And really, what I think one of the biggest impacts that has plagued our community for many, many years was the issue you described, working with parole and probation and having certain clientele come here to Boulder City. That was of great worry and concern to the citizens, and to identify that, to work with them, to help alleviate that was really a big deal for our community, so, among many other things. Thank you for your service and for the goals that you've got. We look forward to working together. Thanks.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you. Others?
Why not to let Councilman Walton go before you? Because he will steal most of what you have written down. But also, I would like to express my appreciation for the work you've done on our contracts, to be able to bolster those in such a way that it protects us as a city, especially, we do a lot of leasing here, so there's a lot involved in that, and making sure the contracts are beneficial and they're up to date. So, I really appreciate that. I appreciate that you keep us up to date on litigation. We have had quite a bit of litigation, and we have, as you have said, been able to settle some of that and look forward to settling all of it eventually, so that that's not where we are. So, thank you so much for your diligence in that and providing us the information needed. For that, on a personal note, thank you for helping me in my capacity to be able to access an opinion from the Nevada Ethics, because those can get a little confusing when they start asking you things and you're not a lawyer. So, thank you very much. I appreciate that. Again, I'll sound like I'm parroting, but letting us and helping us understand what outside counsel fees go towards is important. It's important to be transparent. People ask us questions. We ask you questions, and in turn, we're able to point them in the direction. It may not always be the answer they want to hear, and we might, like you said, address that and look at it, and you've been looking at ways to be able to pare that back, and it's appreciated, and it's noticed. I also noticed that you have been working on ordinance drafting and reviews, and you had a goal, municipal code, and I think that that goal was given $500,000 from ARPA funds, and I know that they have now said that they cannot, the person we awarded the RFP for cannot fulfill that obligation. So, we still have that need. I know the funds are to be spent this year, but I'm very interested in knowing where those monies will go, and knowing then what that means for our municipal code, and hoping that it still goes towards a portion of that in some way, or that still, because that was the intent.
Yes, and the city manager can answer the financial aspect of that question much better than I, but I did, we do have money budgeted for that. It's in the city clerk's budget, and it's on, Tammy and I are looking at various firms that we could use to help us update our code, and because the awardee did back out, we are able to choose who we want. So, we will bring, we'll bring options before you either way, but we are able to go with any, any organization.
Fantastic, and I look forward to that because that tells me that we're still working on it, because as you have said before, we are sorely in need. We, on many of our contracts, many of our codes are, I wouldn't call it the dark ages, but just after it, whatever ages came right after the dark ages, that's where we are. So, that, I still would like to see the focus there so that we do continue, just like you said, you did it with the contracts. Let's do it with our code. Let's get the city up to where it needs to be. And just thank you for your willingness to be able to reach, reach resolutions. I think that in my capacity as a councilperson, I have grown and learned in the process, and I think that the best thing that we can do is grow and learn in the process and move forward, and when we do that, it's better for the people we serve, that's for sure. So, thank you for everything you've done.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Fox?
Thank you so much for the work that you do. You know, again, we're all pretty new here, you know, in the short amount of time, you have done a lot. And what, the big thing for me was the making our safe, or making our streets safer by fixing that business. You know, myself and I know the community, you know, feels the same way, because I, that was outside my window. Every day, I'd look out and I'd see bad people. And I had a lot of, a lot of friends, family, the community would come, and they'd pull up maps of the criminal list and stuff, and they'd all be right there. So, finally, someone was able to do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you. Councilwoman Booth?
I just, I think everybody spoke here, but I just want to say thank you for your enthusiasm. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you. And I'll just add, I appreciate you sitting there, and I just look at you, and then you kind of gently say, no, you can't do that. And so, it's helpful to be able to have you here and on the phone and be able to be accessible. So, I really appreciate that and what you've done and how you do it. I'm thrilled to have you here. I think I've said that to your face before. I like the stability. I appreciate you being, living here and being in the community and being engaged in the community. So, thank you very much. Any other comments? If not, then we'll allow you to sit down.
Thank you, mayor.
And then we'll move to the annual performance evaluation, and we'll do it the same way. We'll get on our computers and we'll do the evaluation, and then, so we'll take a brief recess while we do that. You can start recording, Holly. So come back to order. And on the evaluation, number three, on City Attorney Brittany Walker, the composite score was 3.96. Thank you. Appreciate it. And then from there, we will go to number four, having a presentation by our city clerk, Tammy McKay.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm Tammy McKay, your city clerk. I'd like to start by what I found in my office this morning when I came in, and it was a card. And it says, "They say you can judge a boss by looking at the people who work for him." So what we're trying to say is, darn, we're good. And then I had a lovely notice from all the staff members. I would like to disclose pursuant to NRS 281A that I have a pecuniary interest in this item, as my evaluation may determine potential increases in my compensation or my employment status. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to summarize my duties and responsibilities. I'm grateful to work for the city of Boulder City and honored to serve the public. Before I begin, I was recently asked how I would define excellence. Although the quote I'm about to read are not my words, they reflect my definition of excellence. Public servants should be focused on serving the public, not any special interest group, and good governance should be an exception, I mean, an expectation, not an exception. That was written by Abigail Spanberger. Official duties. All of the duties of the city clerk's office are governed by charter, city code, and state law, specifically NRS 241, meeting of state and local agencies, NRS 239, public records, and NRS 293C, city elections. I'm charged with oversight of the city code, administration of municipal elections, oversight of the citywide records program, and serve as secretary to numerous boards. I'd like to take this time to thank Deputy City Clerk Stacy Brownfield, City Clerk Assistant Bridgette Rodriguez, and Tina Pickens for their hard work and dedication to the city. They are the lifeblood of the team, organization, and community, and I'm so appreciative for everything they do. Education and training. The city clerk's office is committed to mandatory and elective continuing education to better serve our roles and responsibilities. In addition to the required training noted on the slide, Tina has completed 15 training courses related to records management during the past year. Stacy has completed 10 training courses such as Local Government Financial Leadership, Why Records and Governance Matters, and Pool Pack Cybersecurity. Bridgette earned her Associate of Arts degree and continues her professional education to earn a certified municipal clerk designation. Bridgette was accepted on scholarship to attend the Utah Municipal Clerks Institute and is currently enrolled in the National Association of Parliamentarians Virtual Spirit, Spring Training Conference to learn about meeting basics, motions, bylaws, and discipline and board training. As you can see, she is more than willing and looking forward to moving up the chain in the city clerk's office. My training included workforce strategies for municipal leaders, public relations in your community, and I'm currently enrolled in training for document discipline and due process, as well as influential leadership. On the board are some of our core services. On the board are some of our core services. As liaison between the City Council and public, I respond to phone calls, emails, and constituents. My focus is to listen and provide superior customer service by offering resolutions to reduce their frustration. Public meetings. The City Clerk's Office is responsible for the preparation and posting of public meeting agendas, publishing the backup material, and preparing minutes for approval by the body. There are numerous steps to follow in order for a public meeting to be in compliance with Nevada Open Meeting Law. Each agenda is carefully reviewed before it's posted on the city's website and Nevada State Posting Site to ensure they include all of the requirements necessary to hold the public meeting. To just name a few, each item which action may be taken must clearly denote for a possible action. Topics scheduled to be considered during the meeting must be a clear and complete statement. This particular topic is really reviewed in our office. Our theory is if we don't really understand what the agenda says, then probably the majority of the public isn't going to understand either. So it's our duty to make sure that it is clear and complete. And there's also included on the agenda must be multiple periods of public comment to be included on the agenda. Just for the sake of public, for the public, agendas are posted on the city's website, the state website, public notice board at City Hall, and we mail agendas to each resident by request. Public notices are posted and published in the Las Vegas Review-Journal. The 2022 municipal election. Since the passage of AB 50 during the 2019 session of the Nevada Legislature, the city of Boulder City successfully transitioned its odd-numbered-year elections to even-numbered-year elections to align with statewide election cycle. Thanks to the support of the Clark County Election Department and to city staff, the 2022 municipal election was successful with zero tabulation errors. The alignment will result in a cost savings to the city. During a statewide election, the city is only responsible for printing and legal notice publication expenses for ballot questions. The 82nd Legislative Session. In addition to working with the city attorney to review legislative bills, I am in constant communications with city clerks throughout the state to determine any potential bills that may impact the city clerk's offices. Quarterly meetings are also conducted with the Secretary of State's office to discuss regulation updates, session updates, and bill draft requests. Public records. Public records are defined by NRS 239. In general, the purpose of this chapter is to foster democratic principles by providing members of the public with prompt access to inspect or receive a copy of public books and records to the extent permitted by law, which is almost every record. It governs the approved schedules for retention and disposal of records. The number of public records have decreased since last year. This is due largely in part to more records being accessible online. The staff's worked really hard in conjunction with the other departments to ensure everything is scanned and processed correctly and made available in Laserfish, which is then available to the public. Requests for records are due not later than the end of the 5th Business Day unless provided a written notice stating when it will be readily available. The City Clerk's Office provides annual in-person's record training, and a mandatory updated training video is required for all newly hired employees. City Council Administrative Support. We manage the Committee Commission appointments, which includes recruiting and tracking committee terms. The mayor is appointed to the Civilian Military Council Board, and I serve as treasurer. The CMC is a partnership between Nellis Air Force Base and every major phase of intercommunity living to maintain continuity of the working partnerships between the military and civilian communities. As administrative supporter, I determine availability for meetings and workshops, draft agenda items, staff reports, resolutions, letters, proclamations, certificates, maintain calendars, and facilitate events such as the State of the City. I oversee the city council's budget, order their equipment and supplies, arrange training and travel plans, and process reimbursements. Most importantly, I'd just like to ensure that any information that I receive is provided to all five council members on matters of importance. Passport Services. On average, the City Clerk's Office receives 20 phone calls per day and numerous requests through the website seeking passport appointments. And I've just recently learned that the person who works for the city on Friday answering the calls, the majority of her phone calls are requesting passport services. Although this passport service are offered on limited basis dependent upon our work schedule, the demand for it is much greater. The City Clerk staff is happy to provide this benefit to the service, beneficial service to the community. We've received a lot of compliments for offering the service. Electronic Agenda Management System Implementation. This software manages agenda items from the beginning to end and tracks each item throughout the entire journey. All city council and committee commission agendas have been standardized for uniformity. Data collection began in August of 2022 involving gathering agendas, minutes, staff reports, commission and committee member information. Weekly project team meetings, system configuration, and testing began in September. The system was implemented in October with training for all system users. One of the biggest benefits is the public has the ability now, if they're only interested in one agenda topic, they can select that particular agenda item, review the backup for that matter, and view the video of that item without having to read or listen to the entire council meeting. Professional Organizations. I work closely with Clark County Election Department staff and Nevada Municipal Clerks Association members, which is comprised of clerks throughout the state of Nevada. One thing that we're working on that will take place in 2026 is IIMC Conference will take place in Reno, so it's going to require the support of all of the clerks throughout Nevada. In addition to my active membership in the professional organizations listed on the slide, I serve as secretary to the Boulder Dam Historical Association, and I'm an active member at the Boulder City Sunrise Rotary and Boulder City Elks. I'm also a rotary mentor to Taylor Tetter and Joe Stubez. And I am scheduled, some of the outside events that I'm scheduled for is April, I'm going to be meeting with the Romeo Group at their request. I look forward to that. Accomplishments. Conducted a successful election cycle, onboarded three new council members, enhanced public records portal to aid with record searches, implemented Prime Gov Electric Agenda Management System, implemented department cross-training plan to ensure business continuity. I would say that's probably one of the biggest accomplishments in my office that I've seen so far is developing this cross-training plan. We had never done that before, and it's proven to be very beneficial and will allow for uninterrupted services and enhanced public service. Goals. Enhance public records portal by including links to individual departments for quicker routing and processing citizens' requests. Continue assisting other departments with their record scanning and accessibility. Work closely with the city attorney to update our city code. And complete the migration of the 2022 public meetings into the new Prime Gov portal for streamlined public access. And as always, we will strive to continue excellent customer service above anything else. So in conclusion, I just want to read, "No other office in municipal service has so many contracts. It serves the mayor, the city council, the city manager, and all administrative departments without exception." And I feel very privileged that I am allowed to work with all of the departments within the city, and all staff for that matter. I thank you for the opportunity to allow me to serve as your city clerk, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Councilwoman Jurgensen.
I don't have any questions, but I do have a couple of comments. I so appreciate your willingness as a staff even to access training and to remain current and up-to-date. Just implementing the new system that you implemented, I know that that took a lot of hours actually, just to learn and to understand how to make it flow, even up here for us, as it was different, as visually it was a little bit different when we got our packets. So appreciate that. Also appreciate the elections, keeping us up-to-date even, and helping us to understand the elections as they go. And zero tabulation errors, that's pretty great.
Mm-hmm.
And I know that you spent hours, I mean, Cher, how late are you there on election night?
During the primary and the general election, it was after midnight.
Right. And I'm sure you got paid for every minute of that. So, and thank you for that. On a personal note, I love the Christmas and 4th of July parade floats that you provide for us as council. Thank you. That's appreciated, because I can't even imagine.
I would feel remiss if I didn't say I come up with really great ideas. However, it's the staff that really makes it happen.
And that was why the smile went over there, too.
She knows.[1259.01][1259.01](Laughter.)
Also, I've had the chance, I appreciate when we come to you in our capacity as council persons to be able to discuss items. I recently had the opportunity to give Key to the City, something I had no idea how to do, and you helped me with that and gave me information so that I'd be able to talk about those individuals and give background information. I appreciate that. Just enjoyed the passport services myself, so I looked at the 400 number and knew that I was one of them. I appreciate your goal to be able to enhance public record retrieval. I think that's probably the number one thing, right?
It is.
People coming in and saying, "We just can't find this record that we want."
Uh-huh.
And you've updated and improved it so much, it's becoming so much more user-friendly, and it sounds like you're even going to improve it more. And I appreciate that, because as it's been mentioned, that's the reason we're here, is to help them to be able to access the city.
It is.
So, thank you so much.
Transparency, transparency, transparency.
Transparency, transparency, yes.
Yes.
So thank you so much for everything you do. It's recognized and appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilwoman Booth.
I wanted to say, this job was really hard, evaluating everybody, being here just four months. But I've been 13 and a half years as a planning commissioner with Tammy, and just amazing young lady and always even-keeled. Maybe staff may see her differently periodically, but I just love how even-keeled you are. But what amazes me is how time-sensitive everything is for you, and everything's kind of got to be very regimented, or else we're in big trouble. And I've never heard of us getting in trouble yet. So that's the part. So you were very easy to evaluate, because I spent that time with you, but I'm still just at awe at how you guys meet that deadline all the time, and we've, the city's never got a ding that I'm aware of. So I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Part of it, that it's just seamless, and we don't ever hear anything about all the wonderful work you guys do down there.
Other comments?
Mr. Mayor, if I can, please.
Sure.
You know, it's been noted, there's little or no margin of error for the City Clerk's Office, right? I mean, state law dictates this very clearly, and the election department and the timing. And so there's the requirement, the demand for excellence constantly. And that's, I think, one of the hallmarks of a good department, a great leader, is that there's professional expertise going on. And that's, and I like to commend you, not only that you have that, but that your whole staff is there as well. And so we, you know, we really appreciate that, and that's worth noting in evaluating you in your capacity here. You know, with professional expertise and leadership and customer service and teamwork, you put all that together, and that really creates a great leader in an organization and what we're looking for, for our appointed officials. And you bring all that together, and so, you know, thanks, kudos to you. Tammy, keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Councilman Fox.
Just one question. Did she force you to send that card?[1488.22][1488.22](Laughter.) She went and bought it.
I'm going to pay him after the meeting.[1494.32][1494.32](Laughter.)
No, you wear a ton of hats, and the workload that you have, it's crazy. I think my job up here is easier than yours. But you do it so well, and, you know, with the, you know, no margin of error. It's amazing. So thank you. And there's not a day I don't walk by your office, and I don't see you guys smiling and, you know, really enjoying what you guys do. And that is because of you.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think there are many people who use the word "team," and I think you personify that team approach. And we could have had any one of your team stand up there and say, you know, the wonderful things that we do in the clerk's office and how we do it, and we would be still amazed at how well it works. So thank you for being the leader. Thank you for admitting how important the team is publicly in front of everybody, because that goes a long way towards building us up and building your team up. So thank you for that public admission that we really do.
That was easy to admit. Thank you.
A good team. So thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
If there are no other comments, we'll go into a recess and do our evaluation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Recession.